Good evening. It's, hey, seven o'clock.
Good evening to you.
Call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum. Members Cronin and Cleaver are absent. If anyone's recording this meeting, would they make it known? Don't have a lot on the agenda this evening. First up is A and R plan for Avenue A.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Is there a different one than... Oh, you got your three points, please.
Did you see that Plymouth Woody over married, said?
No. No, they don't let me leave the town. Thank you. We'll share. We'll share.
Man, I haven't seen one in many years.
Well, we need to find two of them.
Two?
Yeah.
What's that like?
I've got ten acres left, but...
Oh, good. Where?
Up the title street.
I don't know what that was.
It's covered out.
We might tonight. Is that a good area or a bad area?
Well, there'd be a thousand feet of the railroad tracks.
Uh-uh.
No!
Yeah, some stuff on it.
Yeah. Can I get away?
I wasn't in a railroad tracks.
It's really secluded.
No.
Unless I can get a train.
You need two of them.
When you're ready, Brad.
Good evening. Brad Bertola with J.C. Engineering. This project is located at the corner of Avenue A and Johnson Street. It involves a lot line adjustment to create frontage for Lot 1039. As you can see, parcel A will be removed from the corner lot, originally Lot 1035, to give a minimum 150 feet of lot frontage and provide access off of Johnson Street to create frontage for Lot 1039, which is currently a landlocked piece. The lines are set at 30 feet minimum width for parcel A so that the land area can be used towards zoning, zoning area requirements. The lot does meet zoning requirements. MR30 district, it's minimum 30,000. It is 65, just over 65,000 square feet and it meets the minimum of 24,000 square feet of non-river front upland. So we're just over that by about 4,000 square feet, so 28,152 square feet. I have a note on the plan that says parcel A is going to be unbuildable under the current configuration and is to be conveyed and combined with Lot 1039 to create 1039A. The remaining land area for Lot 1035, which will now be 1035A, is just over 30,000 square feet. Both of them meet the lot shape factor.
I did look at the, one of the older assessors map and I think access to this property originally was set up on a right-of-way that follows the property line kind of straight from Cherry Street. And it's shown as a right-of-way, not a, not a street.
Okay.
So that must have been the original access.
The street after Cherry Street is the one that puts along the playground?
Um, yeah.
Uh, it's one street over.
Yes, because that's one street over.
It's Cherry and then Apple and I think that Apple runs along the playground.
Yeah, and Apple is actually a street. There's a portion there, but it's not been developed. The town's got some bowels and fronds and something.
Yep. Well, this one, I guess the map 134, I guess they put a garage in.
Isn't there a garage right down where the, where the street is here?
Yeah.
Is it a right-of-way or a street? Because I thought it's on a map.
It says right-of-way on the old assessors map.
But there's a garage running right through the middle of the right-of-way.
Yeah.
No, no, no. The right-of-way is running around the middle of the grads.
Yeah.
Which came first. The grads or the right-of-way? That's Oakdale. I'm just saying, if you look at, if you look at the assessors map, it shows the right-of-way going right down towards the garage.
There's your mic.
There's a garage going right down, right in the middle of the right-of-way, that's all. How long have your clients owned the property?
They've owned Lot 1039 since 97. And the other lot since 2006. Say it again. Yeah, yeah. No. Nope. It's a Form A.
See what?
Yep.
That's what happened to those Cherry Street stuffs.
Right. Right? Right, well, that's somebody built the garage probably without a permit right on the right-of-way, right?
So the garage is dead, so they can't...
Yeah, so they never got a permit for it.
So much of the people that went right to get the garage, you see.
I think, I think this is the garage right here, right?
Well, I think it's right there.
Yeah.
I take it that was originally done tax titled, tax option?
Uh, one of them was from the town of Wareham.
You know, the same party owns both parcels, right?
Same party owns both parcels.
You know, here, here we go again. People pick up this property, they, they know it's all screwed up and then they're going to come and try to play hardship. They created their own hardship. You know. I think it sucks. Excuse me, I'm sorry, Bob. I didn't say that. I'm away from the mic.
The, I would say the hardship was created by the neighbor of the block, the right-of-way. I don't know about...
Well, I don't know if it's standing. Depends how long they owned it, but I know when Fielding bought, one and bought the other and all of a sudden now he's going to be a developer over there on, you know, this, this is, I think it's garbage myself. I really think it's a shitty plan. You know, if there was a dwelling on it prior, yeah, it's definitely a hardship. Here, here he goes. He wants to create a lot on something that shouldn't even have a lot, a house on it because for whatever reason. And, I don't know, like I said, I think it's terrible. That's my opinion. I'm not going to sit there and beat it up, but...
They reside in, or home at 1035A?
Yeah.
And will they reside at 1039 or are they going to do something other than that?
I think they're, they're attempting to sell the lot.
I, I think, you know, sadly, what, I think in my mind, what's happening is, at least for, for me, I'm trying to make sure that I do a better job for the town moving forward and try to not stop, but limit these unusual designs just to make something buildable, even though in, in the way you've done it, it may qualify as a buildable lot. I think ultimately we should stop that because it's not in the best interest of the town to do that. So I think at this particular case and Mike's comments, I think you're kind of hearing some frustration that we're really trying to do a nice thing for the townspeople and make sure that the quality of the new construction and the developments and the, and the neighborhoods are nicer than they've been in the past so that, in this type of situation, of course, as you know, kind of makes it a very unusual situation because you've got a very narrow run of, you've created street frontage just to make this lot buildable and it's really not usable space. I mean, you know, it would be awful hard to fence in your small little sliver of land if you wanted to have it for children or whatever, so...
I mean, it, it's, meets the requirements. I understand where you're coming from.
Yep.
Due to a zoning bylaw that came to effect, you know, after prior subdivisions where...
Right.
Basically the limit of pork chop lot and it came down to no less than 30 feet or it doesn't count towards lot area, so...
Right.
And you've got to fit a circle on the lot, so...
Yeah, I, I think, you know...
There's no need to use the leg. They'll own it. It's...
Yeah, it's paper frontage.
And they'll just be, you know, on paper, that's what they own.
Yeah, but then...
It'll most likely just stay wooded untouched.
I was going to say, then it's...
Or whatever's there.
Yeah, then it becomes an unusual situation because the people that are going to live in the back lot, you know, they may be conscientious and want to go out and mow that, but chances are they're not. So the people that ultimately live at 1035 are going to have a pretty decent yard and then is it going to, are they going to be upset about it and want to mow it? And it becomes, you know, just not a positive situation, I think. And of course, you know, we have to go by the guidelines that are recorded, so... But I think in the future, we're certainly going to want to revisit those and try to make it nicer for the neighborhoods.
I mean, it's, it's a decent sized lot. It's one of the bigger ones in the area, so...
Yeah.
Just trying to create a parcel to give her legal frontage.
Right.
Two, two-thirds of it's in the waterfront, the riverfront area.
Yep.
You know, can't, you can't do nothing there but raise geese. Well, not geese, the swan took over, so...
Yeah.
I'm sorry about that.
On, is there a structure on 1037, do you know, or, or 1097? There are structures on those that they break out.
Uh, 1037 has a house. Uh, 1036 was a newer house. Obviously a house on 1035, there's a house on 1038. 1037's newer in the last, you know, 10 years, 15 years possibly. Across the street was addition, cleaned up piece of property in the last 10 years. Uh, this was tear down or rebuild or prefab house that we had done on Lot 1036. So this, obviously this neighborhood, this, this section of Oakdale is definitely cleaning up with newer, newer structures in the area, so...
And you didn't come straight in with a subdivision roadway because you'd be outside the role of the A and R, is that...
It'd be a subdivision. It, you'd have to create a road. You'd have to create a turnaround and it would eat up a lot of lot area. I don't think this town has the authority to waive certain requirements on Form A plans where you could come in with a reduced frontage. I'd have to go get a variance through the Board of Appeals to keep that as 30 feet to explain what I'm doing, to show that in both situations, it's, it's going to look the same.
You know, you, you just said something that makes a lot of sense. I think you should be in front of the Board of Appeals instead of us.
It's just too, too time consuming of a process to... And, you know, this wasn't, the, the L shape to create the frontage doesn't affect what's being used for Lot 1035. It's not, it's not like in their yard areas. It's wooded at the moment.
Well, it is kind of a stretch, but... I think there's some extenuating circumstances with the actions of the other day.
Well, the thing is, every neighbor and their brother's going to come in with the same situation. We set a precedent here.
Well, we don't set precedents.
We don't. Personally, I think this should go to Board of Appeals. You know, like I said, I wish, I don't know, I'm not going to get an emotional provocation, that's for sure. I think it's terrible. You know, yeah, Oakdale is cleaning up to develop, but the thing is, then you get something like this goes on and you've got another, uh... I'm trying to think of a nice word for it so I don't curse. I'll, I'll behave, okay. It's, it's terrible. It's terrible. You know, it's bad enough we're going to do them in Swiss Beach, you know, with existing dwellings and this and that. And, uh...
I think...
And the thing is, it's owned by the same party. So he's creating his, he's creating his own mess, basically. And, or should I say he's capitalizing on what he thinks he can? Can we deny this? No, we can't. I'm trying to think of a good reason. I, I think you should go to Board of Appeals. I think it's a piece of, a piece of shit.
I'm just transferring a piece of parcel to convey it to another parcel, another parcel.
You're trying to make a buildable lot out of something that's a piece of garbage.
It's all, it's all, it's all upland. Riverfront piece of property that's double the size of minimum zone requirements, so... If he can't sell it, he can't sell it. I'm sure there's going to be a buyer out there that'll want that piece.
Yeah, I'm sure there is.
Well, when I look at some place, I, I, what would you do with it if it was separate ownership? If you find a way to accommodate it?
Well, if it was separate ownership, the thing is, the person got his own hardship. He, he created his own hardship because he owns it, okay? You know, you, you buy a pig, you take him to the body shop, you pin him, you make him look like it was still a pig. And the thing is, you know, here we go. Mike, Mike hit it right on the head. You know, Oakdale's cleaning up. There's a lot of nice houses in Oakdale now. A lot of good work's happening in the last 10 years. But the thing is, there's still a bunch of pieces of garbage like this here that's going to tune into garbage because this guy's just going to roll it and go off and it's somebody else's problem. And you're not creating nothing that's, has any, I shouldn't, honor.
I guess my question is, is, I, I don't know enough. I'm, I'm a new member, so I, I, some of my comments are really questions. Personally, I don't like this design, but I know why you did it. I understand it. But if the reality is that these people for Lot 1039 have a right-of-way along Lot 11038, wouldn't that have been better access because it's already approved as a drive? And I understand there's a garage in the way, but isn't that garage, shouldn't that be investigated to see if that was built with a permit and see if it is a legitimate garage that should be there? I don't know the situation or the, I don't know what the garage is, but my thought was, if I was the owner of 1039, I might investigate that because that's a granted right-of-way and to me, that makes a lot more sense. But again, of course, then you have a garage in the way that a neighbor's put there and maybe not the neighbor that's living there now, maybe a prior neighbor. But, so my, my point is, and it's a question, should that be the avenue they should pursue? And then they wouldn't have to do these unusual shaped lots. And to me, that would, that would be, in my mind, an approvable option. Is that, am I wrong? I'm looking for guidance, to be honest with you. From, from you as well, please, because you are a licensed engineer and... I'm just looking at this as, if I lived in this neighborhood, I wouldn't like that, what you've done because I know in the long run, someone's not going to maintain all that and it's going to get overgrown and messy and in that, you know, in the drive. I mean, whoever builds the house back there, is it going to be a nice driveway or just a dirt road that's going to be unkept and another eyesore? I guess, those are my questions and you can't answer them. I understand that. But to me, that's what I have to look at being on this board because I want to make sure that the neighbors that live around there don't think that we did a bad job for them. And I look at the, I look at the future, not at what you're doing today. Without swearing. And I, and sadly, I think you're the person that's kind of catching us in this dilemma because it's something we've talked about in the past that it's not a comfortable situation for us because we don't think we're always doing something that's good for the neighbors.
It's, it's an odd shaped lot to begin with.
Yep.
Uh, the existing right-of-way is, if it even exists, still a single strip similar to this.
Right.
On paper, that's what it looks like. In the field, that's not what it looks like. I don't know what any future buyer's going to do. I don't see them needing to use this area, but maybe they will want to use this strip. Right now, there's kind of a cut-in dirt access that cuts through it now to get to the back piece.
Yeah.
So they're just going to use that same access.
Yeah.
You can only assume that if someone builds a house, they're going to put a driveway in. And if someone puts a house in, they're going to maintain it.
Yeah.
So we have no control over what happens on subdivision. Just trying to move one piece to another. The remaining shape factors fit. Even though the lot's odd to begin with.
Yeah.
So it meets zoning requirements and shape factors themselves are actually waivable by this board. I can actually fit them on the lot, but it's waivable.
Right.
Now, the 200-foot riverfront, is that, that's not a do not disturb area?
That would be do not, yeah, it's a 200-foot riverfront. Wetlands Protection Act.
That's the new guideline.
Well, it would be nice to say, okay, we'll replace this right-of-way with just this right-of-way, but we don't, we don't have that authority. That's when you have to put the dog leg on it.
Would the zoning Board of Appeals have that authority?
I would think they would because, although I don't know if they would direct them back to Lot 1038 and make it clear the right-of-way.
Well, that's the thing, I mean, if, if the...
But leaving the right-of-way gives them worse access than they, than this proposal.
Right, right. I think it's just a continuation of such, and, and I know the lot was originally odd shaped, but, you know, to, to design something like this, and I know you have to to meet the requirements.
Yeah.
But I, I would like to see that stop. Not that I would say I want to stop all of these approvals, but I'd like to see a mechanism in place where maybe the zoning Board of Appeals could, could look at it and say, okay, so our options are 1038, there's a right-of-way. Not a good use, really. This other right-of-way makes a little more sense, but allow them to not have to put the L on it so that they're cutting up that other lot and, and make it just a neater, cleaner, you know, finished project.
If you look across Johnson Street, do you see a little...
Yeah.
And we've run into that before in this neighborhood where they have these little right-of-ways that...
Yeah, slivers.
That go to back lots.
Right.
Mike, Mike, there's a couple in the back of that river. Like I said, we, we knifed, knifed them back quite a while ago. I know four lots back there have no access.
Right.
And somebody goes, oh, I bought the water, come in here, what are you going to do?
Right, right. Well, I understand and, and sadly, I feel like, you know, he's stuck a little bit in the middle with this because he, he's done a good job for his clients, but, you know, it, it's just, we just, I just don't think it's good for the neighbors moving forward.
It's, on paper, it's, the use would be as is. The drive of where it is today is going to be as it is when someone built it.
Right.
It's just, I'm not affecting the owner. The owner's not like, it's his lot and...
Right.
He owns it. He's living there and he's losing a piece.
Right.
So it's not, not affecting what his current use right now.
No, I understand, but...
He's losing the piece because then he's dumping that, that white heaven in the back.
But the thing that I think is, you know, I don't look at today. I look at tomorrow, what tomorrow and maybe once he sells that lot, he moves on and now you've got two new owners. You've got an unusual situation that, you know, again, the maintenance issue just concerns me. I really think, you know, unusual shapes typically don't get maintained like clean shapes. And, uh, so...
I don't see this being very marketable, but it's exciting.
Oh, I think, I think...
Like you're saying, somebody will...
I think they'll sell.
It's, it's a riverfront piece of property, so...
I think they'll sell in pretty short order. I'm sure.
That's a recipe for disaster in the future.
Is it, uh...
To get two people from Georgia to do it.
And be hooked into sewer.
Yep. Which is on Johnson Street, I assume. So they'll use that right-of-way, that 30-foot right-of-way for the underground utilities. Say it again. Little bit. I'm sure the dig in there is probably pretty good.
Is there any more discussion? Any care to make a motion?
I, I'm not experienced enough to know how many of these have been approved in the past and that's why I'm reluctant to start with a motion. Mr. Baptiste has expressed his concerns and I know he will not.
It meets, it meets the requirements. That's, I'm transferring one parcel to the... It's not a 10-foot strip, even though that's allowed. It just can't count towards zoning.
Right.
So transferring one piece to create frontage for another piece, it's, it's always been there.
Mr. Chairman, do you have any words of wisdom that you can share with me so that I'll feel...
Well, I, I don't see any other way to bail it out, to salvage the situation.
I guess my question is, is I, I understand we, we are here to help applicants. That's our position, but we're also here to kind of oversee and look, look out for the town of Wareham. I don't think this is in Wareham's benefit personally. I think it's in the applicant's benefit to get this in. And as Mr. Baptiste mentioned, you know, they bought that lot probably with the intention of this rather than adding it onto their land so they would have a big parcel. I don't, I mean, although they've owned it for a while, you said 1997? They bought 1039?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the house is going to definitely benefit the town. We're going to have a house that's got assessed value...
Right.
On the river.
Right.
More tax dollars. Entirenous sewer.
Right.
$18,000 all the betterment to the town after the fact that was never probably accounted for when they came up with the betterment.
Right.
So I don't see how it's going to impact, be negative for the town.
This area is...
I don't think they can, if they weren't charged a better part, they can't go back and charge it for now. They have to...
Well, that's another, another story to talk, to talk about.
System development charge or something like that. You know, the lot size is larger than most of the neighborhood, but it's at least consistent with the neighborhood. I say, I wish we had the ability to approve it without having that dog leg on the frontage, but we don't have a back lot.
Either way, it's, it's a, a strip of land and this is not the first odd shaped lot in this neighborhood. They're all relatively odd.
That's how they all got shit odd shaped, is bullshit like this. You know, people building garages on the neighbor's land across the roads and everything else, they've been doing that for 50 years. And all of a sudden now, you know, everything's up and up.
Yeah, when you look at the lot shapes in this area, they are quite... Yeah, when you look at the lot shapes in this area, they are quite interesting.
They weren't like that originally. If you go way back and you look at Oakdale, they were all gritted, they were all small. And, and this has been, uh, a piracy of land going on in there for, like I said, for fifty years.
It's, I, I understand, it's the property lines in this neighborhood.
I think it was a lot, you gotta put your house over there.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's my, actually, he can, he can have his garden over there and all of a sudden, next you notice, he's got a house up there or whatever, says, oh, no, I'm not leaving. And, um, and then it comes like this and then somebody else ends up with the mess.
What's it, you know, off top you had what the elevation roughly is with that, with the shape factors?
Thought it was in the ballpark of like thirteen or fourteen.
So it does come up from the river?
Uh, comes up from the river, yeah, yeah.
So will that house be a full foundation home or will that have to be on stilts?
It's not a velocity zone, so it wouldn't be stilts.
It would have to have one of those, like a blow through foundation or something like that?
It probably would, depending on exactly where the line is, I don't know, a lot of this neighborhood is a floodplain.
Yeah.
I don't know exactly where the cutoff between, I think that front house is not in the floodplain. I think further back's in the floodplain. Wraps around. I know that ten thirty-seven, that house was in a floodplain. I don't know about ten thirty-six, I don't think that was a floodplain. So it's higher up kind of in this area than drops down towards, towards the river.
Mr. Chairman, can we add conditions to something like this?
No, you can't condition any of that.
Right.
You have something in mind?
No, well, yes, but not if we can't, no. Just trying to make the best of a tough situation, but if we can't ask for any conditions, then it won't benefit the neighbors moving forward, so.
How far back does Johnson Street go? Is that pretty much the end of the area?
Keeps, keeps, has, has the property lines go, keeps going back.
It goes, it goes way back.
Well, the river's here.
The riv- the river goes like this, and it goes around like this. Johnson Street goes down, there's, there's quite a few.
There's a, there's a-
Lot property back there.
Yeah, it's a big piece. I don't know how, I don't know what the acreage is, four or five acres or so, kind of in the back.
There's, there's quite a bit back there.
They don't look like, you know, the way they look, like they're just kinda going down.
It, it looks like it just starts, right, it's very deceiving, yeah. See, in the olden days of Oakdale, you wouldn't wander up in the back and then, at least you'd never come back home. If the kids can get you the dogs, dude.
Well, I'll make a motion to endorse, just to keep things moving here.
Motion, you made a motion to approve plan as presented. I will second that motion, but I do want you to know I'm gonna be looking for ways not to do this moving forward with a lot of these unusual lots, just so that you're aware of it.
I think the town did that with that lot shake factor by law that came out. As there was definitely subdivisions in the past that have created frontage on the road, strips with area in the back to meet the lot area, and the pork chop lots.
Yeah.
But they came up with, you have to be at least thirty feet wide or the area doesn't count, and you have to fit a circle on the lot
Yeah.
Certain size, so, I mean, it meets the requirements, I mean, obviously, it's an odd shape to begin with, we're just creating frontage on the lot.
In the business, they call that creative engineering.
Hey, where, just a John that made that subdivision that inspired the-
Yeah. That's, that's, that's why I said creative engineering, and he let it go right over his head.
Look at all that open space they have now.
Oh, man.
So I've seconded your motion, Mr. Chairman.
I, I would say, I don't think any of us are unhappy with that piece of land, but we understand what, that it does meet requirements, I wish there was a way around it. I don't know, there were discussions long ago about a back lot. Something called a back lot or?
I don't have problems with that, to be honest with you, I just, I, my problems are how they have to be done by, unfortunately, the licensed engineers to make it work. I think they're a little bit stuck in the middle and, and certainly we are, cuz I don't think really the only one benefiting here is the applicant.
It doesn't put out a good product.
Well, that's what I mean, the applicant's benefiting, but the town is not. I mean, although you said they're gonna collect taxes, but I think appearance and continuity of neighborhoods is just as important as taxes in my mind. It troubles me when I drive through some neighborhoods of Wareham that have been decimated with unusual shapes and outbuildings that aren't supposed to be where they are and things of that nature.
I mean, it's, it's on paper, you don't see it in the field.
I know.
Highly unlikely anyone's gonna come and put a fence down there to delineate that.
I know.
You know, you know-
So you see it on paper, you don't see it in the field. You're gonna see the driveway that exists today, obvi- obviously probably improved.
Right.
Maybe some pavement, maybe some crushed stone, something, just to, to get to their house.
Right.
So, it's not gonna really change the, the neighborhood, otherwise seeing a new house-
It's not the change, to me, it's not a positive change. The change is gonna occur. To me, it's a negative occurrence, not a positive occurrence, and that's really what troubles me. Cuz I just don't think that it's good for the other neighbors to live in an environment like that, because I think maintenance and, and like you said, the driveway, you know, I'm sure that some gravel driveways are beautiful, but most of them are really just dirt paths that kick up dust and don't look good and nobody mows the sides cuz they're dirt and so.
That, that argument could be held for any lot that's completely a box, it's-
I know.
There's no difference between this lot and perfectly nice blocks.
Yeah.
It's the same, you, there's no control after the fact.
Right.
And that's how it is on all property, so.
Well, I hear what you're saying, I, and I don't disagree.
It's really, you know, it's not a, I guess a valid reason to obviously, we have no control over the lots after. If someone wants to build a house, it's not gonna be an investment, they wanna maintain the investment, so.
Right.
And this, people have been doing that in the last decade or so, this whole neighborhood's kind of, you know, people investing in these neighborhoods, new houses and tear down rebuilds and
Yeah.
So, I think it's positive for the town.
I, you know, just looking at it, I can see other ways to accomplish the make two lots, but they don't look any better than what that looks like.
Right. Cuz the town does not allow just an access, right, to the backland.
If they did, would be-
Much, it would-
Strip, but the, the bylaw just doesn't account for that.
Yeah.
Some towns allow it.
Yes.
They have that certain requirements, every town's different, but this town just doesn't have that.
And they're restricted, so, and even though they allow it, it, there are some good restrictions in place as part of that. At least in some of the towns that I've worked in in my career, so.
I think I mentioned last meeting, I was going through, there was a section where it was like one driveway went in and three houses came out over here.
Yeah. But they do have, like you, you know, talked about how it will be made, they, they have restrictions on they will be paved, they will be, you know, grass on both sides maintained and, cuz I've, I've built in some of those towns. Yeah. Well?
Anyway, there's no more discussion. Allen, take up?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Three of them.
I thought I heard Alan over.
He's trying to kick me into the table, Mike's in his way.
Do you need a pen, Mr. Chairman? Do you need an append to sign?
Yeah.
The myla? Say it again? I could it? No one tells me that. I do think it's wrong, and I really wanna know who I talk to about gonna fix this.
You go back and have to rewrite the, uh-
Bylaw? I think we fill the time?
I think we did look at all-
Meeting?
No, the zoning bylaws, twenty-one, rewrite, we get some-
Beautiful. I don't like this, this, and, and- Really against this. I mean, I don't, I'm not against that one, I've been on that.
Alan, what's all the ribbons over by the police fire station place, that for the people going to the frame mark?
I think they're doing some work on the parking area there, I think.
Wow.
What was it, the gas station?
Thanks for the information.
Close to the class, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. I thought they were doing some paving or something, but-
Where's this? Where's this?
Company did the work, they cleaned up the areas.
Next to the, uh, the new loading dock there, cattle dock.
The new cattle dock. There'll be cast, there'll, there'll be a special train coming down.
Gonna take people underneath the bridge?
Livestock?
To, uh, buses they get on for the events. I'm not sure how many of them-
You all set?
It'll be just one, one trip down, one trip down for a while.
You put that tornado in Revere this one?
Nice one.
Coming closer.
Very sad.
Cut that town off, they can buy a new town home now.
You know, you don't get emails, right?
Yeah, I do once in a while, I haven't been on here for a long time.
Sent an email out last week about the subdivision up at the Bay Club.
Oh, man, I don't even wanna talk about that.
Well, I, I have a lot of questions. I wanna see it go through, but I wanna see it go through so it's, it's nice.
I, I wanna see it go through, but I don't wanna see it go through with the number of houses that they're proposing for that place. It's just too damn busy. Now, one thing they never talked about is you've got all them houses in the middle. How about ballson play, ballson in the air, they're gonna be whacking people and everything else.
They do have a little buffer zone.
A little?
Yeah. The, the Bay Club homes.
Home, a, a little?
Are we discussing that tonight, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, it is on the agenda, uh, Dave called, uh, the, the people involved and said that we haven't got comments back from other boards, so they agreed to, uh, postpone their return trip to our next meeting.
Who else left and had no comments?
Why?
Who had no comments?
The board had not accepted any comments. Yeah, they didn't, they give me a question a week and a half ago, hasn't gotten no comments.
Why?
I don't know, they had, they had nothing to look at, we could have.
The, uh, the comments that you've taken emails?
Yes.
Is it our freedom to forward that to them?
Yeah, I, they're mostly questions. I, being the new member, I, I look at it as a, you know, as a developer myself and, and what I always would try to do, so that it would better be better. My concerns are absolutely, and I'm very concerned about parking on at each house.
Yeah, I think you shared that concern.
I want, I want two off-street parking spaces at every house, landscape professionally. And you can do that easily, there's many neighborhoods, like in the Plymouth community, that you can just go see them where-
On lots that small, Mike?
Yep, yep, absolutely, yep.
Because you gotta get the traffic off the street.
I don't know about zoning, I, I suppose six thousand square feet meets the requirement of that area, but to me, that's super small. Um, and they don't, they're not, they're stretching to make them as small as possible to put in a hundred fifteen homes. I would rather see a minimum lot size, maybe thirty percent bigger or more, and have a hundred homes. I don't know if we have any authority for that, but I'm not super excited about the lot sizes. And that, so, and I don't know if we can enforce that. I kept the plan.
Were the smaller lots associated with the, uh, multi-family?
No, singles, I thought.
The multi-family was, was fine, I had no problem with that.
They were bigger lots.
It's the single-family home lots, terrible, terrible, terrible.
So.
Is, is, is that the foot?
No, you gotta keep coming. So, the smallest lots appear to be kind of in this area on the road. Yeah. And my question, really, Mr. Chairman, is
I think six thousand feet's too small.
It doesn't give, it doesn't give, I know there's a lot of open space, but it doesn't give people the usage of their own yards and privacy to enjoy.
I thi- I think I said that already, and, and the thing is the applicant kept on emphasizing a point, well, you've got all this vista behind you. And, and everybody uses this open space thing, it's visual open space.
You can't use it.
No, and, and it's no means land, because now there's gonna be golf balls flying back and forth.
Right.
Uh, the thing is, how about these people in the middle here, they're trapped.
Is the zoning six thousand square feet?
I have, have to recheck what, it must be allowed in the conference recreational. Here we are, is a little better. But we don't have any six thousand square foot zoning areas, no, you have
That's what I mean, I mean-
Some, some pre-existing stuff.
I'd really would like to work with these people.
The trip, the old zoning, well, the old lots and the trail flats were five thousand square feet. And the rules the way they are now, any new ones have to be bigger.
Right.
Five thousand square feet's now a whole heck of a lot.
You go in the, we reannounced, the lots were basically fifty by a hundred, if you had swift beets, they were smaller.
But the thing is, when-
Onset there, in areas of onset, the old lots smaller.
And when they were laid out, basically, they were laid out for cottage.
For cottages, tiny cottages.
Right.
Twenty by twenty.
Twenty-four, twenty-four by thirty-five.
So, my, my, my feeling right now is, I love the idea. I don't wanna approve six thousand square foot lots.
Do we know how many, how many there were?
I don't know, they didn't give us a, I, I kinda looked and said, geez, did, did they give us a count of, you know, there's fifty six thousand square foot lots and forty eight thousand square? I didn't find it, but I didn't dissect the plans maybe that close.
But the, 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 the multi-family houses up there are, are fantastic.
They're fine, they're, they're on the bigger lots, they're on the ten and twelve houses, four foot lots.
And, and the thing is, is you being a developer, Mike, of course, when they go in there, they look for the maximum of their return, of what they have.
Yeah, I know, that's the problem.
And, and these guys here, like cocks at the trough, they're not gonna give up an inch, and they just keep on emphasizing a point, and the thing is, that's, that's more than total saturation.
But if you're seeking a retirement home for three months of the year on the golf course, six thousand square feet with a small cottage on it, it's not-
They're excellent as a retirement home.
Unreasonable.
These aren't cheap houses.
No, they're not cheap.
Think about it, if you, the, the prices start at three forty-five, but for a thirteen hundred square foot home.
That's a lot of bucks.
You know, I just think the lots should be a little bigger for a little bit more buffer and a little bit more open space that you own. You know, and give them the ability to put the second driveway in.
You know what scares me, Mike, look, is if they start building this development, okay? Now, maybe I'm thinking, I've been listening to Obama too much or whatever, if they start building it, they get committed, and they get down this avenue here. Say they can't move these houses.
Right.
Are they gonna build them and rent them out? They own them.
Right.
Right? That could be a getup.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Okay, now, now you're talking, you know, ten thousand more kids.
Right.
It could be, it could be a getup, because they got an investment here. They're trying to recoup their investment and put property in the pocket.
One of the things that, one of the things we talked about is, I, I used to... They're on the golf course, yeah.
So, what would you, what would you say for minimum lot size, eight thousand?
Eight thousand.
Minimum.
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 Eight thousand is as small as I would like to see, and I don't know if we can enforce that. But I, if we can, I would like to, and without getting the other members mad, I would like to not oppose.
Oh, I'm not opposed to that, I, I mean, I...
I'm not looking for ten thousand, I, I just think, I think six thousand is just too small. And I, and the other thing is, you know, and I don't mind their waivers, some of them, I don't, I don't mind that they don't wanna put, you know, sidewalks in. But I do want adequate walking trails, as they talked about, so that people can traverse the entire area safely without having to walk on that road all the time.
Right, because you, there's, there's a shitload of houses in that small, small area. And the thing is, I'm looking at, like I said, I'm looking at the thing, we got subdivisions in this town now that were built. And, and names are nothing as important. They're supposed to be high-end or high-rent. Okay, so all of a sudden, the market falls flat. The developers are doing it all the time. So, okay, let's put these three houses up now, we'll sectionate them. So, this guy's paying two dollars a month sitting there fighting in his front lawn while I go to work busting my ass.
Can planning boards restrict that?
You're talking, no, you can't.
I mean, the percentage of units that would be rented?
You can't, because it's privately owned. The thing is, when, when the market goes back up, throw the people out, you rehab the house, and then you put it back on market, which is a, a, a matter of value.
Some of the things that I really would like to see, Mr. Chairman, is I'd like to see complete detailed home plans, not just a...
Conceptual?
I wanna see all four sides of a house, I wanna see...
How do you do?
What the windows are gonna look like, what the grids are gonna look like, the materials they're gonna use, I'd like to see a schedule of what type of wood they're using on the other side. Can we request those things?
Under the conference recreational, we can, but I think that would be more of a definitive plan.
But I wanna see that before I approve this.
Well, that was the other discussion I had with Dave. A lot of times with the preliminary plan, we review it, we voice our concerns, but we don't, we haven't voted on it, we just look on...
Some of the stuff that makes me crazy when I drive around, I think about if I live next to that, that we just approved. Some of the things we've had to approve, like tonight, trouble me, I don't, I don't like it, because I know it's not helping Mr. Smith, who's the next door neighbor. And I think that's kind of my obligation as a member of this board to look out for the future, be in the neighbors. I want them to get what they want, but I want it to be tastefully done and professionally done, no more of those...
Now, 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 the guy that owns the house in the front bought that lot in the back, you, you think he, he bought that thinking of the town? He's just thinking of his pocket.
He did buy it in ninety-seven, so that's in my mind...
And he just waited for the other one to show up, so when the other one shows up, he sees an opportunity, that he's gonna go and capitalize on it. And capitalize, that's what, that's what people like that, they don't get shit.
Get out my people making money, I really don't, I think that's just American way. But I want them to do it in a way that's good for their neighbors, because when they're gone, and they put the money in the pocket, they still want the neighbors happy.
Well, people that do stuff like that, like I call them foxes at the trough.
Yeah.
You know, you get the big pick, he comes, he puts his elbows out, so he has all this much food, none of the other little picks get nothing, and they don't care.
And for all we know, he didn't recreate that lot, so he could put his son on that, so that no one else...
Yeah, and I'm okay, I'm okay with that, I just...
But the thing is, I, I really think it's a shitty, shitty situation. I think he should've went to the border of the park.
But we can't send him there, right?
But I mean, that would be the next rule, I guess, if we were to deny it.
If, if, if it was denied, yeah, he has no choice.
Have we ever denied any? I've never seen one in my tenure, but have we ever?
You have to care for number ones for something, right?
We, we've denied a couple of them.
Getting back, getting back to this, I think, I think the lot size is troubling to me. I definitely wanna see the designs of the homes, I want to. I, I mean, I don't know if I ought to vary with that, but I'll, I'll voice that, you know, if you don't want me to say it, Jim, I'll, you have the option.
No, that's fine, I think under the conference recreational district, we have a lot more leverage as far as seeing stuff like that.
Did you do your, your applications, Mike, to see how many less lots you're gonna have in that area, like going from six to eight thousand?
Because I don't know how many of the six thousand are...
No, what they do is they'll sacrifice some of the twelve thousands to make eight thousands.
I would, I'd prefer that they sacrifice some of the six thousands and cut down the amount of homes.
The numbers show.
I think a hundred fifteen homes is excessive, when you're talking, what did he say, they're working on twelve acres? A hundred fifteen homes on twelve acres?
That's a good deal.
Isn't there something else in reference to unit count by square footage in one of the bylaws?
Unit count by what?
By square footage, you know, if you take twelve acres and an average acre is forty thousand square feet, multiply that up to how many square feet you get, and you put a hundred fifteen homes into it, divide that by the one fifteen. Are there any restrictions or guidelines for so many housing units on so much square feet?
Density, uh, maximum building.
Right, is there something that we could maybe look at to help us?
There is in the TDR, there's on the conference recreational.
I remember the TDR, because I remember going back and forth with that, but, sorry. Like, the width of the road, thirty-five feet as opposed to forty, I don't think that's unreasonable, because it is a residential area.
If they get off-street parking, if you got on-street parking, it'll reduce with the, the issues.
Right, the, the removal of the sidewalks, I mean, I think, I think there should be, I think there should be something where people don't walk. I don't necessarily think it needs to be a sidewalk.
Well, the thing is, though, Mike, if, if you had twenty-five houses in the end with no sidewalks, you figure the average number of people won't be walking at any given time, okay? When you get the density of this here, and you figure the average, say, if twenty percent of the people are walking at any given time. And you get the movement of the number of people in the, of cars.
That's thirty people.
You've got a problem.
Right.
You know, it's just like walking on a peat...
I think what you're talking, if you, if you go in the existing areas, and you go into the first phase of Bay Club, we're talking not a lot of off-street parking, no sidewalks, and it's tight. You go into the newer section, things are a little wider, you get an extra parking space, it's all nicer.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think we're reflecting that with the comments.
You know, I hate saying this, but I don't really care that people didn't ask. I know that the applicant always hangs their hat on, because I, I'm that applicant, law, and I hang my hat on, look at, you guys proved it before.
Oh.
You know, why, why should we?
Well, I'm just saying, if you wanna visualize it, look at the older section of the newer section.
This, this is an opportunity for a really wonderful community for lots.
This is a recipe for disaster.
Or it could be, right, if, if it's not...
It's a recipe for disaster, Mike, it really is.
I think it's, I think that those houses are gonna sell.
You know, you think so?
Yes, sir.
The number of those houses, that density in that area?
Yeah, I think they'll sell, I do think they'll sell. I think they need a little bit of improvement, but I think they'll sell.
And I think you'll see a lot of empty nasters seasonal.
Yeah, people like us.
Oh, i- if, if, if you want to push it that way, put an entry restriction on it.
I, I think they're reluctant to do that because the market is so poor. I think if the market was strong, they could do that, but again, then do they fall into a situation where they're discriminating? You know, I don't know.
What they're selling kind of feeds to an older...
Right.
Well, that's, that's what the whole community was initially set up on, was the, uh, the snowbirds, the guys that wanna play golf two, three times a week. Or just wanna live on a golf course, an open space, and, you know, you're not there all the time.
Living on a golf course is beautiful, even real golf, it's all open spaces.
Something like that, that a kid, you go to, uh, Harley Ridge, I mean, in places, it's gorgeous, gorgeous. But, but, but I, I think the density, the density, it, it just boggles my mind for them sticking that many houses in that small lots in that small area.
I thought when they first talked to us, they were talking, being here ninety homes. I never saw anything in writing, I don't think of those numbers, but I, in my mind, that's what I thought they were planning. When they, when you brought to a hundred fifteen, I thought it was excessive.
When they came, this one here...
You know, I think at one point, they were talking like a hundred and fifty.
A rigid, if you ask me.
Their previous, two owners ago.
Right.
And it was described to me as we walked, as we walked the golf course, it was described to me as everywhere you see trees, there'll be houses. This is not as bad as that.
The thing is, with small lots, they're guessing in that small area, scares, scares them.
I don't, I don't start a fantasy club.
Alan?
I don't think that benefits Ochs or everybody.
How do you guys feel? What's, what's the input from you guys?
Uh, we're here.
No, no discussions.
I brought up to him, taking a look at, I brought the plans up to the office, asked everybody two weeks, two weeks ago, take a look. Any comments there? No comments.
Kaboom Road, I'm sorry, Dodo and Kaboom.
Yeah, they said that that was an easement.
Utility easement? So, that means it won't be a road?
Now, the, the thing is, if you get, if you get the right interim firm, uh, they go from a car path or ancient way, depends what you're looking for. And they go back and forth, and Madden's, that's, they pull all that stuff over there behind nineteen-eight, from halfway road. There was, there were car paths, when they divided it up right on the edge of the road, when they wanted to get the rest of it, then it became an ancient ways. Remember that? With Richard Babose, that was an ancient way to cut across, and all of a sudden, Boyer Keenan owned two ball slots on the end, he wanted to go across, it became, whoop, the slot, it's just a path.
No, you go over to Old Stagecoach Road, you got a lot of stories.
Right in the middle, right in the middle, yep, right in the middle, yep.
So, I think, I think I expressed some, like, concerns, but I, I do like the project. I want everyone to know that I like it, so, but I would like to see it, um, a little bit bigger lots, absolutely, someplace for the, for the neighbors to walk safely, off-street parking, absolutely.
Or if you wanted to do a smaller lot, cluster them in one area, like have a little...
See, the, see, here, what they did here was they maximized the usage, you know, they, they could've done fewer, but this gave them the maximize, and these lots are kind of larger, actually.
They, they could've blown these up and put the road down here, made these lots bigger.
Right, but...
But they would've lost the lots in the middle.
If this was a six thousand square foot lot, they moved the lot line over here, and then you got two eights, you know?
Right.
But you still got all the depth, you got, still all, it's congested on the outside.
I don't know, I just, I'm just not a fan.
But if they were to cluster the small lots together, like a little cottage area or something like that, that might not look bad.
I don't know how they can do it, though.
That way you could...
They're not gonna wanna revisit all the new road work.
Mike, why don't you buy this place, put a big park ranch up here, and build a house on the other end, and everybody be happy?
No, but I wanna buy this.
Well, the, uh...
The, uh, Sealands?
The Cedar property?
Yep.
That Cedar property's been a crux in this whole project since...
Is that where you're gonna, is that where you're gonna put Guatemala on the...
No, I was thinking of putting my own house there, or a bar. I, I do like the project, and I, my sister lives in Pine Hills in a neighborhood similar to this, but her lots are ten to twelve thousand feet, and the houses are much bigger, my sister's house is like...
But, but if, if you look at Pine Hills, they do have areas where they grew smaller homes, smaller lots.
Yes, they, but...
So, you have a mix.
They're doing that right now with...
If you wanna walk in there with you.
Let me just tell you, because I've looked at it, they're doing it right now, they call them cottages. They're about, they're not the thirteen hundred feet, but they're a little bigger, they're sixteen, seventeen hundred feet, and they're selling for five hundred thousand dollars. Because the finish and the landscaping is impeccable.
They got two-car garage.
They all got a two-car garage and double drive. But they're, but they're perfect, you know, these guys, when we talked about landscaping, oh, you know, we'll, we'll be doing this, this, and this. At Pine Hills, they told them, ah, you will landscape every square inch of that lot so that it's perfect, and it's, and it's as private as you can make it. And of course, the quality of the house is gonna, is much better than what these folks are gonna build.
How much are Pine Hills built up, Mike?
Oh, I'd say two-thirds. They got three thousand, uh, homes.
Just goes that one, and then one that drove off like GPS.
Yeah, that, that, that property originally belonged to the Tops, goes back to the buildings.
Yep.
Digital loan over.
I insured it.
When, for these guys, with digital loan...
When Michael Volko bought it, the original man who bought it to do some type of a planned community, and then he went upside down financially in one of the downturns, and sold it to the people that ended up owning it, but it was his concept and his idea that they embraced.
When Depp bought it...
There's gonna be a big training center.
There was gonna be a training, uh, training slash manufacturing, and when they went to Plymouth, they says, what are you gonna do? We're gonna build an aperture there. We're using process, as in, over aquifer, so it's gonna be world trade training center, and, uh, never flew, things changed and...
No, I think, and it's, I mean, I, I go to visit my sister, I know often, it's, it's really nice there.
Yeah.
But everybody takes pride in there. There's no fool around, there's no, you know, you maintain your property, if you don't...
Is that age restricted?
No, no, yeah, no. My sister lives in one of the smallest, in her neighborhood, there's about forty or fifty houses, and the lots are, most of them are on the golf course side. And they're ten thousand, twelve thousand square foot lots. My sister's house was eight hundred thousand when she bought it. Of course, they downed out about six or seven as they found it. So, I don't mind it being three hundred thousand, I think that fits the current economy, and I think it will fit a great void that we have. But I think it needs to be done very tastefully.
But if they were to take one section and make cottage, like, set up on a smaller lot,
Yep.
where a half a dozen people could have one landscape but taking care of everything, you know?
I don't think they can do it, though, with the roads, the way they've designed them, you know, that's the thing. These are flowing roads, they're not cul-de-sacs where you could probably do that, or, or even an unusual horseshoe kind of deal, you know? These are long flowing roads, and I also, I don't know about Kaboom, but I don't know how they get authority to move something that's already there.
The roadway?
Yeah, who gives them that authority? We don't have that authority, right?
Well, that's why I asked about the ownership of...
You're gonna figure out what it is for us.
Yeah, no, they're maintaining it somehow.
No.
Utility easement, but I don't know about this.
Well, I think, I think utility easements here, right? But my understanding is, is that the, the road is a, it's a, it's a full dirt road right now.
Well, it's paved where they go.
It's paved up here.
Yeah, this, this is dirt up through here.
Yeah, and this would be the utility access, I assume. It says twelve-inch PVC main, I don't know if that's new, existing or...
It must be, well, the water department has a stamp up there.
You know, I would like to see the percent, I'd like to see the lot sizes on the plan. You know, I know it's tight, but I'd like to see how many six thousand square foot, you know, are they sixty-five hundred, are they seventy-five hundred? I think it is a good plan. And I think it will be good for Ochs to have this kind of quality home there, and these people hopefully will frequent the restaurants and the little shops and lots, et cetera, and...
I'm not really...
I'm not keen on that.
Nope. Not roadway right next to Ochs or there.
I agree. I saw that, and I'm like, maybe they had to do it that way.
How many kids in your sister's development? Have there any kids that exist?
Not that I've ever seen, I'm sure there are, but I've never seen one.
I mean, it does eliminate...
Something that we, we haven't put in a subdivision in twenty-five years is playgrounds. Well, they don't go outside and play anyway.
Right, right.
Well, I was thinking of that, not, not necessarily playground, but recreation area.
I, I would hate to have some, somebody have a barbecue there, you know, you said, oh, they'll have someplace where they can park and they can walk down or whatever, it doesn't look good.
They have plenty of room to do that.
Yeah, when you have a eight, ten thousand square foot lot, you're gonna, you're gonna...
This is, this is open space right here, I mean, not huge, but you could have that, you know, they got, the drainage is there, but you could require them to maintain this as manicured open space. You know, so that if the neighbors want some area to walk, because that's not on the... You know, so that if the neighbors want some area to walk, 'cause that's not on the golf course. It's, it's behind the tree line, I assume that's a tree line. Right? Isn't that what that delineates a tree line?
Yeah.
So, say, hey, look at, you know, clear five thousand square feet here, or ten thousand square feet, whatever you have. And, and you have to maintain it, when you maintain the golf course, you must maintain that as well.
You're gonna totally maintain all the sales, it's the same thing as the tree line right here.
Well, that's the thing, that's the buffer, you were talking about golf balls. You know, you gotta see where your tees are and where your greens are.
Okay.
So your greens up here.
You get balls in the flight, balls this way, these guys here are all in the crash zone. They have plastic windows in the back house.
That's what they make all the time.
I think that's why they're leaving the trees, those balls aren't getting too wet.
Those, those, that's, that's all scrub pine, that, that's not gonna have any, uh.
It will buffer it.
Mike.
I am a golfer.
Yeah?
Yeah.
You have a golf, you never golfed with me, huh?
No.
I can take a window up there and a hundred and fifty yards, like nothing.
But you can't be.
Still see if it's confronting, it's off to the side.
We used to golf at Little Harbor, were you? On the eighteenth hole, Roger Fernandez. More than once, I see him bouncing right off the utility shed in the back, and now I'm. Off the roof.
Do you, what do you guys think, am I off base with some of my concerns?
No, I, I, I think, I think you're right on. And, and the thing is, is the density, the density, the density and the size.
I mean, I'm not too concerned about that as far as, I don't, I'd like to see it less than a hundred and fifteen homes, but I don't need to see it sixty homes. But if it was a hundred and the lots were bigger.
Eighty-five.
I'm not loving this road, like you said, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't know what else you could do, but I don't love that, but I'm sure that they need that because they will, I'm sure the town requires that.
Well, two things, they wanna maintain their separation and it cuts a lot of driveways on Onset there.
Right.
And these houses here, the drivers are terrible, Onset has a decent road.
Yes.
You know, if these were, well, if, if they were, kind of lockdown road.
No, these, these are the people who are in the bad spot.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I'd drive down this road and a golf ball bounces in front of you. Yeah?
Well, you know, that's the green you see, you know, the high hill, they hit down, so. I, I think that that drainage area is gonna be the buffer, there's not gonna be any issues. The only thing is, these aren't tees here. So, and they're right in their backyard. You could spray a, a drive here, and they can whack these houses, that's for sure.
If you go to Ornisa Heights where it backs up to the golf course. Yeah, similar situation, I think they're probably ten, twelve thousand square foot lots up there, but back up to the golf course.
I think ten, twelve thousand is okay for the size, how's they proposing? You know, small home.
This is only a property.
Say what?
This is only a cultural property.
Conference Recreation.
What does that mean? Zoning. Conference Recreational in MI thirty, multiple residence district. Some of the lots are.
C I.
C I Conference Recreation.
Of course, ring of Conference Recreation, of course, housing wasn't allowed. Yeah, we, we're not. We still have.
It's not allowed currently?
Well, it was allowed, I think, in our.
It's in Mobile Lake District.
Yeah, we call it Mobile Lake District.
Some of the things that I also saw, like proposed lot with, some of the lots are sixty feet wide. You know. What are the setback requirements?
I'll have to get you all copies of that. C I. See them.
Then a lot of this.
Ah, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The pavement's gonna be twenty-two feet wide. So if there's a person parked on that street, it's a one, it's a one-lane street.
Well, if you get a trash truck coming down this road, the road's blocked.
Right.
But even though they, they, uh, they, they, they're looking for Cape Quad Room.
Which I'm okay with.
You know what Cape Quad Room is, in a tight situation like this, gypsy parking lot.
Right, they drive right up on the.
Drive right up on the one, right up on the front.
But you, you hope that. You know, it's a homeowners association, they're gonna have restrictions. We should ask for that and see what they're gonna have the restrictions as far as, like in my sister's neighborhood, you know, you, you can't park on the street overnight. Not allowed. You can't have a commercial vehicle in her neighborhood. If you do, you must put it in your garage.
Wow. You know, which, what they got for truck size limits, three-quarter ton home?
I think.
I know, I know a lot of places, uh.
Yeah, I mean, I have a three-quarter ton truck.
They, they won't let you have a one-ton door.
Right. Right.
You know, no, no camps, no boats.
Right.
They let us split the village, in the Onset village, just a part, true. O B one, O B two. Kind of funny, we made that change. It's not that that's the, the location.
Your sister and girlfriend too?
No.
They just enjoy.
My brother-in-law likes to golf and they just love to look up old, you know, they walk the trails.
Beautiful, beautiful piece of law.
I think, yeah, she, you know, she's just a sixty-eight, man.
Says a sixty?
Yes. She's ten years old, only, she doesn't ball, but she likes to walk the trails and, and the flowers, you know, they, they both got, and they are, you know, it looks like a magazine spread. But that's what they like.
The attorney, that was involved with, I think it was a first guy that was trying to do it. The guy lived in the William for a little while, his attorney had a point. He was in the William, he was on the plan board for a little while. And then when he took on that job over in Pine Hills, when they were talking about developing, I screwed up the board, I can't think of his name, but he grew up right on two beach.
Robert Kraus.
Probably fifty, probably fifty now, eight twice.
I used to do a lot of work with attorneys, you know, it was, he was a little. Might have blew his way into something, you know.
So anyway, we're gonna get some feedback from police, fire, conservation.
I think it's something from the board, that's what we see.
What appeals they want.
I think it's on our agenda for. We'll get some information on Kahoon Road. Or Kahoon, whatever it is.
I, I don't wanna make that call. Like, I don't, I don't feel like I usually have any kind of qualifications to make that call. I think that their engineer should do an in-depth study, report to us what he finds.
Well, their report was that it was an utility easement.
Oh, what, how much of it, though, I, I wanna see a prepared plan with details.
When he was here last time, when that question came up, every time it, it did come up, how small it was, he always tried to avoid it, he, he never addressed it.
Right.
You know, he, he was, it was, um, well, it could, uh, it, you know, nothing was really, really clear.
Something that should be reviewed by.
It's gonna be nailed down.
By our peer review with the engineer. I don't wanna hear the salesman's spiel, I wanna hear the engineering details.
Yeah, well, okay, that's, that's.
And have our engineer agree or disagree. I don't know who you're talking to.
I, I think that's a good, great place to start, 'cause that's gonna make a lot of determination what's gonna happen.
Right.
Because, um.
Yeah, I think.
Well, my, my point in bringing it up is, like I told, I don't wanna create title insurance problems for people down the road.
Right.
Well, how about up the other, the Kahoon Road? Do people have rights to pass and repass?
I mean, they still have, they can still get to the same place.
Right.
But it's not the same.
But if they have rights to pass and repass across that road, right off the bat, when you start talking title insurance or something, somewhere at the other end, that makes a difference, using that business.
But if, if the road is, like I said, if the engineers agree that it can be moved and it can be built.
Yeah.
So that it can pass and repass, then, then the neighbors have no concerns. Other than this area here that looks like the utility connection to the main road. I'm not quite sure what their intention is with that at some point.
Uh, what are you talking, maybe possibly a breakaway service gate or something like that, emergency.
Yeah, it has to be blocked.
Because the thing is, how many feet do we have here on contiguous road, or, or dead end, you know, a one-way street?
Well, they.
Thousand feet, he's all done.
Well, they have to.
Well, I don't think they wanna have it as a cut through either, so they'll probably put it like.
Right.
Gate.
Right. And I don't, I don't even know why you'd need it, to be honest with you, I mean, the road services all the homes, but you need to get at it. But you'd need the gate maybe for the utility companies to do something.
If something.
If you get a fire in there.
Yeah, but if you get a fire, the truck's gonna go right there and, or right here, and they're gonna take care of it, I mean, there's, there's homes here, so there's driveways for them to access. You know?
It's too busy.
Well, how many homes is that too busy?
Twenty percent less than what you got in here. If he's gonna make bigger lots, is he?
Twenty less lots, so you want ninety-five homes? I don't know if that's unreasonable, 'cause I don't know the zoning. I mean, I think these lots are ridiculous. These lot, these are the six thousand square foot lots, I assume, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. These nine houses here, they're not, they're gonna sell, but they're gonna be the cheap ones, I'm sure. Or those will be the ones they can't sell and they're gonna have to rent. I mean, if you look at it, they're on the main road, they're the smallest lots, their backyard is on a main road, these three are dogs. These six are better, but they're not great, 'cause they're teeny.
With these. Although your back, your backyards and.
Yeah, the backyard's a little better.
The frontage is on the road across the road.
Well, but they're not gonna do it like that, right? They're gonna have the frontage here.
Yeah, this is the front of the house.
Okay, and they'll all.
This is the backyard, yeah, the backyard.
But I mean, these are, I think these are horrible.
So if you live here, you can have a cooker, throw a chicken bones on the street.
Do they have to have this always loop, Mr. Chairman, or can they have a, a circle?
Can't go a thousand feet.
Without a marriage. 'Cause I, I've done that too. One of those actually worked here. But I built playgrounds in my neighborhood, and I gave ten acres to the town. And, oh, yeah, and I spent a hundred thousand dollars to pay this food.
Yeah. The ten acres were for marijuana cultivation?
Uh, I don't know, it was the guy, it was a place where all the guys hunted the deer, so I figured I'd just give it to them so they can keep.
Ah, there was turtles in there, tortoises, right? That's what it was.
Yeah, was it? Hey, uh, I'm gonna start a service. Somebody told me, I heard, I don't know if it's officially, yeah, that painted turtles are gonna go on the endangered species list. Painted turtles, red bellies, and I'm gonna have tortoises for, for lease.
Red bellies are already endangered.
Red bellies, yeah.
I told you that.
But some turtles, some turtles are going.
I, I told you that the project in Holdup that I did, the town told me they'd never approve it, and they caught the conservation agent dropping turtles on my property. And they caught her. They caught her, they called me, they said, what do you want us to do with her? I'm like, I don't know, get the turtles, I don't care about her, get the turtles.
Swap places, throw her the one.
I'm sure this tree hump is actually at all.
She did that, she, she had three of them in her car and she was bringing it to my man. They fired her. I felt bad, I'm like, she's a nice lady, she's just crazy.
All right. I told Spotty Robinson, I had no first brother, I thought he was gonna die from an heart attack, laughing so hard.
They seem like good guys.
Is there anything further?
No.
And we, and we, do we get anywhere on this?
I, I think we're on the same base.
What section of the zoning is the, uh, we changed the, uh, the zone?
You may not find it online, I think it's, I don't think it's been on the website, the Conference Recreation.
Clean and new, so you don't.
I see you have to buy four on the lots just to put all your cars.
We have to put some high copies up there, 'cause I don't think you can find it online.
So it's not.
They do wanna try to buy that.
I think it got inserted in the zoning book. That and.
I don't wanna do that.
You put yours in the market yet?
There was another one.
Was still cool looking, cool, active looking.
The grandma's still there?
Oh, yeah. They sell, they're trying to sell their lots.
I'm starting figuring out the size of the lots. It's a little, no, uh.
No, he's still there, he's in a little bad divorce.
There's nothing, there's nothing that's on.
There's nothing that's on. I already told this guy.
With the Chevy, you want one?
Yeah.
Remember when they grew this one? What is gonna be sold? What, huh?
Last day of the feast, cut that in the computer, but Conference Recreational, we pulled it in, tip one.
I mean, I, like I said, I just think six thousand's a little too small for my liking and.
Which is, I just don't know if you can go where you wish.
Yeah, and, and as you.
He could, uh, would go into cluster.
No, it's not, it's not clustered for sale.
Because basically, under the, the golf course residential is not allowed? Can you give them down? In the con, in the conference, I thought residential was.
Not allowed?
Yeah, it's not allowed in our, our listening, so.
Really? Well, we should get that, so we can share with their engineer and.
Well, I'm sure they have a copy of it.
But I would like your engineer to give us.
But we passed a special, it's being changed for a while. You know, commercial mixed use, with a hundred contiguous acres on that, with an eighteen-hole office.
Right.
Seventy or eighty.
Seventy-two.
It has to be, but it's the same priority that was at before, championship standard.
Are they getting on this bar or are you moving?
Well, we've got green lights everywhere.
Have to ask the chairman. Mr. Chairman, is it time for a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Second.
You, before you do it, you wanna ask for it next week, you have a lot of full, uh, the last one, you wanna change?
Oh, I, I'm not.
What, the backlot?
I, I don't mind backlots, Mr. Chairman, 'cause I've built them, but I've built them to a standard that.
Well, that's, we definitely look at standards.
Answers, you know, the houses that are on both sides. I mean, the driveway is paved, the driveway is, you know.
Landscaped.
Landscaped.
Maintain.
Maintain.
To some standard.
To, to the standard of the yard, you know.
But see, the thing is, though, with, with backlots, how can you put it in there and deal with it with Form A, 'cause you can't condition a Form A.
Well, that's why I was asking.
That's what the whole goddamn problem with Form As, is you can't.
Is it just us or is it every town?
Every town.
But, but a backlot is not a Form A?
Like, that.
Well, it could be.
That one became a Form A because he put the hundred and fifty feet on the sidewalk, correct? So we would need to write some language that says that you can't do that to get a Form A. It is a backlot and you need to live up to these regulations.
Yeah, and you could make it a public hearing.
Right. Which I think it should be, so something like that, not that I'd say no if I was the neighbor, but I'd, I'd tell the board, look, and I wanna make sure that if that does happen, drop down there immediately. But you, you know, he's, he's not going out there to maintain that for me.
No, man.
That shit's gonna look like a, it's gonna look like a field.
He's gonna, he's gonna, he'll build, put it in the back, whether he builds it, blows it out or whatever, he's gonna blow it to the other place, it's gonna go someplace else.
Right. Which I'm, I'm okay with that, I don't mind people making money. But, but when you leave, make sure you don't leave a mess.
But the carpet bed, a lot of my carpet beds.
But I don't like the mess, I want it, if you wanna do that, great, and I hope you make a million dollars. But when you leave, make sure it's vetted and before you go.
You must have been a good developer, you know that?
I never made money.
No?
I built a lot of stuff.
That's why you was a good developer.
You know, I made pennies compared to.
We had, we had guys come to town whose way in was easy, they made millions, and they left us nothing but craps and ice water. We had, we had guys come to town whose way in was easy, they made millions, and they left us nothing but crabs and ice water.
I couldn't build in my head because the way I build.
You're too honest.
I'd never make it all, I'd, I'd go backwards. I mean, I would build every house, I'd landscape every house. I put saw in the front of every house I build, I don't care if it's a two hundred thousand dollar house or a million dollar.
Okay, to change the subject, when you talk about, you know, your, your standards and other people's standards. I was someplace the other day and I bumped into a colleague of yours. Good friend of yours, Mario.
Mario, too good.
Mario, you know, the guy's good friends with the president of the bank? He couldn't get away from me quick enough, he didn't see me. I don't know, but I never did nothing to the man. But he talks highly of you, but.
He does.
We're still waiting for him to come in, right? He's a carpet bag.
He's a wheelie dealer.
He's a carpet bag.
Yeah, he, he knows how to make money.
Somebody, somebody.
He went to Rochester.
Somebody spoke to him the other day and said, oh, he, he's complaining he can't get the money for the house in way.
The value. There is no value. I have landed way in, that's nice land, I, I built on it for this value, I built a beautiful home. I built one, the guy gave me almost five hundred thousand for it, now he's trying to sell it for four hundred. You know, but it's a great house.
You should have put those roadways in.
What roadways?
The paper streets that are underneath that property.
With the ten acres I have up on Agon Beach.
Because I have a lot of those paper streets, I wanted you to finish the roadway.
Yeah, I have, and I have that, I have that roadway that goes to the back of the lots, but I gated off.
Is that the roadway or is that a water easement? There's a water main.
There's a water main there, but it's right away, that only went to my land, it ended before it hit the main road again, so I shut it down. Hey, kids out there drinking and.
Body someplace. You're from the city, you hung around a corner on the street, we went out in the woods.
And?
In fact. Hey, yeah, there was a motion made to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Sure was.
Any discussion?
Like, so we can, we can ask on Kahoon Road and get, let's start with that, so that, rather than waste our time on the other stuff, till they, till they show, show that they can really do what they wanna do.
Yeah, one question before we adjourn, do you, are we just gonna let the voluntary plans sit or do we wanna drag in peer review at this point?
Absolutely. I'd like to see peer review from the very start of every major project.
Okay.
Question, is this some, something that they have to abide by with the kind of units that exist in the property?
With the, the ones that are already there?
Because that Kahoon Road goes right into their own.
Goes by.
Yeah.
Now, now, does, the existing condos that are there, do they own any rights to the amenities in the gardens?
They have some agreement with the sewer.
There is something.
Which they just recently settled, they've had between they put in that.
Because way, 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 way back, it was condo, the condo association level wasn't involved, they put in, right? But there was some kind of mutual agreement.
Well, that was, that was the, that was the rape and pillage of the first development. But there's also an agreement that they have to use that island pole solely monthly a year.
Lot of unanswered questions, there's, there's been so much smoke and mirrors in that whole property, man, since day one. I mean, it was great when Whitehead Sanford was down there, that was a good place to go buy. White was good, Mike, white was good.
I, I hear you, I just never had the luxury of that style.
All favor, the shop must went down, but.
Right.
Listen, they need scoops.